Councilmember Ann Snaby, do you recognize that we have a forum present in business?
Yes, sir.
Form being present, I now declare this session open. And I'll ask our development director Lonnie Waters if you will please lead us in the vacation.
Lord, I thank you for this meeting tonight. We asked you to give guidance to everyone, take it at heart. And Lord, we just asked you to watch over everyone as the storms are coming through, give them safety, give them a chance to move away from the storm and be safe. Lord, we asked you for all favors, bless everyone where families are having death in their family. Lord, we asked you to bless our flag, our soldiers, all these favored blessings we asked in your name. Amen.
Amen. Councilmember Gentlemen, if you believe in our faith and believe in our flag, please...
Yes, sir. Praise the heavens to the flag of the United States of America and to the God of all who has sent us, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, do you have the agenda in your package? At this time, I intend to take a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented to council.
So moved.
In a second, please. Have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Our agenda is adopted. Council, you also have in your package the improvements of the March the 25th, 2021 work session, the public hearing April the 5th, 2021, regular council meeting, and the April the 29th, 2021 work session and public hearing. At this time, I would intend a motion that we approve those minutes as were sent to you.
Make a motion that approves the minutes.
I'll send a motion there.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, this time I will read a proclamation announcing a municipal day of prayer. This will be May the 6th of 2021. Whereas the municipal day of prayer is an observance to be held May the 6th, 2021, whereas the municipal day of prayer was created by the Pickens County Ministerial Association, created in 2021 by the group of local community pastors, and whereas this event signifies that prayer isn't important to our community today as it was in the beginning, and whereas on Thursday, May the 6th, leaders and citizens are invited to attend the event at 12 o'clock at the Pickens County Courthouse to celebrate this event for the Pickens County and Jasper community, where local pastors will speak and share brief comments with this community. And now therefore, we, the mayor and council of the city of Jasper, Georgia, join the Pickens County Board of Commissioners and declare Thursday, May 6th, 2021, as municipal day of prayer to encourage all citizens to join us in earnest prayers for our cities, counties, state, and nation, asking that God, life illuminate the minds and hearts of his people so that we may meet the challenges that lie before us with courage, wisdom, and justice. In witness whereof, we have here unto our hand and seal, set the seal of the city of Jasper to be in effect this third day of February in the year of all over 2021. Item B is final consideration and approval of ordinance number 2021-06 and ordinance number 2021-07 for text amendments to zoning ordinance and sign ordinance. I'll ask Brandon, if you will briefly bring this to us.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. And I know I was out of the week, but I'll have to talk to Tara Beverley about the extended stay since February, since that was an incorrect date, just for the record, Mr. Mayor. We've got to amend that for you, but nonetheless, I am smiling, so it doesn't come across with mask on, but I am smiling. This is a second reading, Mr. Mayor, of an ordinance whereupon staff had identified some text amendments needed to be in our zoning ordinance, in the design standards, as well as the sign ordinance. This was favorably considered at our last meeting, so this is the obligatory second read, and there's been no additional changes made.
Council, at this time, I intend a motion for final approval of ordinance number 2021-06 and 2021-07, text amendments to zoning and sign ordinances.
So moved.
And I need a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Item B is final consideration and approval of ordinance number 2021-08 as amended for discounted water and sewer rate. This is something, ladies and gentlemen, that we have done in the past and are now looking at different figures for what our range will be for this. So I'll ask council members Levy and Snaby if they will bring this to us. Again, we bring this to council. This is the second and final reading. This is a tiered reduction of water and sewer. Make sure I got that right. Is it sewer or just water?
I think it's water and sewer.
Water and sewer. Thank you. Short memo. The new accounting, real honestly, the new accounting system allows us to do this where the old one did not, where we just have a one-tiered system. This is to give families with less income a break on their water bills. Again, it's our second and final reading. I think it is very necessary for some of our citizens.
And... Second.
Council, at this point, I would intend a motion to approve this final consideration of ordinance number 2021-08 as amended for discounted water and sewer rate.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to the final consideration of ordinance number 2021-06.
Okay. Have a motion and a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries. Item C, final consideration and approval of ordinance number 2021-09 for the request of deannex parcel number 0298064005 located off Burnt Mountain Road from the city of Jasper. And we'll ask our director Lonnie Waters to bring this to us.
Mayor, council, this is the second reading of this deannexation. This property was annexed into the city a few years back, and then it was sold to this gentleman, Mr. Brenner, at 1070 Burnt Mountain Road. He has said there's no utilities, no water, no sewer, anything he has requested for it to be deannexed.
Thank you. Council, I intend a motion to approve this deannexation.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second to approve deannexation for parcel number 0298064005. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the deannexation is granted. Item D is consideration and approval of purchase of three generators for Hickory Cove and Hill City at an expense not to exceed $30,000. And we'll ask David Hall to bring this to us, if you will, please. David?
Can you be approached?
You'll approach, please.
What? 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 Steven, mayor, council. At your direction, the city of Jasper water department has obtained, well, they obtained three bids, three quotes, I'm sorry, from, one from Wilton Electric, one from Amtech Drive, and one from Pro Punk. They decided not to bid. So we asked for three quotes on the receipt, too. Out of those two, Wilton Electric LLC was low bid at $21,435. Amtech Drive come in at a bid of $54,871. So at this time, I'd like to ask council to approve the low bid of $21,435 for Wilton Electric LLC.
Council, I intend a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a second, please. These three generators. Any further discussion by council? Any questions?
David, is there any reason we need to approve a little bit more, just to give you a margin, or is it sort of in and out for...
That's it, it's all bid now.
So moved. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Go ahead, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Consideration and approval, excuse me, consideration and discussion of mowing maintenance services bid. And we'll ask Brandon and Beverley to bring this to us. And I think that this is probably indicative of where we as a community are when it comes to trying to get general contractors to do business in today's world. So if you will, please.
Okay. At council's direction from a previous meeting, we put together a mowing maintenance services bid, worked with Lonnie and David Hall, and we came up with a list, and then came up with a list of all of our streets where the roadways were mowed. And some of those were one pass, some of those were two passes. But the total mileage, we split the bid between the roadside mowing and then mowing at locations that we take care of. Ended up being 70 miles of mowing on both sides of the street. And the acreage at the location altogether ended up being 50 acres. And that's our parks, water, you know, the treatment facilities, the pump stations, the lift stations, and the facilities here, and the fire and police, and the water towers. We got four requests for bid packages, and we only received one. And I told them that they could bid on one section, both sections, whatever they felt like they could handle, and in hopes that, you know, we could get the two lowest, we could split it up and get the two lowest. But we only got one quote, and it was just for the locations, and the quote was for $165,597.
And you said it was just for the...
Just for the locations.
And item B, location?
Not the roadside mowing.
No roadside mowing.
No roadside mowing.
Nobody bid on roadside mowing.
Nobody bid on that.
And Mr. Mayor and council, you may recall last month when we were floating the idea about how are we going to address a staffing shortfall? You may recall when the pandemic hit, we had just come off of our retreat with the new administration, and there was the opportunity for us to look at how we can be more efficient in terms of our personnel and not fund certain positions, and then to continue to try to be mindful of balancing the budget, we had not budgeted any new positions. I think early on, the mayor of this administration recognized that there were deficiencies with respect to the adequate number of personnel in certain departments. So staff spent the better part of 2020 looking at how we fund certain positions to make it appropriate that this person is assigned to this department, therefore, there are the monies allocated through either an enterprise fund or a general fund. So the street maintenance, right-of-way maintenance, mowing, it's almost a blended staff with some of David's staff and some general fund staff with the street department. His personnel are considered enterprise for the water. So we're looking at ways to say, okay, we know that we're probably half of where we need to be with respect to the street department and to maintain our parks and the miles, 70s plus miles of right-of-way that we are obligated to maintain, but could we source out an opportunity for the private market to bid on? I think I used the example of $80,000, just kind of spitting number out there to say, for illustrative purposes, if you hire someone at $10 an hour, that's $20,000 a year, 2,000 hours, on top of 20,000 of benefits that through the obligatory health insurance, through the Affordable Affordable Care Act that we have to maintain along with defined benefits, that one person's a $40,000 hit to the general fund budget. So if you did two, that's 80,000. So I just threw out the idea that if we could get some favorable quotes or bids from outside entities that come in and say, okay, we'll maintain this right-of-way in some city property at X, it would give us the ability to forego having to, number one, try to find someone in this bear market of trying to find, you know, personnel qualified, and number two, it does help the overall general fund budget that, from a liability perspective, in terms of if someone else is using their own liability insurance, if, you know, rock goes through someone's windshield or something, it helps on that end. So y'all afforded us the chance to, you know, see what we could do. Unfortunately, I do not think that this is something that staff would recommend as a viable option. Later on this evening, we will have a discussion led by the mayor and the admin committee with respect to the pay scale, and perhaps that will afford us the chance sometime in June to present with y'all some options, because we do have the obligation to perform the services that the citizens require of us. So we do not want to shirk our responsibility. However, we are still in a transitionary period to where we've evaluated the certain budgets, get the budgets in line, get the staffing in line, and then what we're going to have to do is try to follow up on hiring the appropriate personnel in the appropriate places to perform the appropriate jobs. There will always be blended personnel, and there'll be some cost allocations, but we are beginning to put forward something that's a little more viable and sustainable long term for this organization as we keep servicing. So to say it was a shock would be an understatement, especially since it was not for the entire, I mean, you are in effect looking at four persons that could be hired through this.
If we could find the $10 an hour, which we cannot. Go ahead.
So that was, that is why we wanted to at least bring this forward for a little bit of closure, unless this is something that y'all wanted us to pursue further. Staff's position would be that, hey, here was an idea that we thought might could work. You don't never know until you try, and so we'll just kind of go back to plan B and present y'all some more options next month.
Council, any further discussion?
I do want council and mayor and public Brandon to know that I, of course, I take care of my entire yard myself. I don't have any relationship with professional people, but I do have friendships with quite a few of them, and just kidding, of course, but...
It's a good-looking yard.
But I did reach out, I did reach out to the people that I know who thought would do a good job, and most of them, the reply was currently, because of the pandemic, inability to get workers, they had no capability to expand. And so I'm shocked by the amount. I'm sitting here trying to figure out if I could do it, but...
We might make an offer.
Thanks for the effort, anyway.
Thank you. Council, any further discussion on this subject? We need to vote on this before we can accept it. We don't really...
I would feel more comfortable because we did go through the formal bid process, that if we actually just rejected the bid, so that way we could tie it loose end, if it's the favor of council to reject, which...
Like I said, staff... Council, I didn't take a motion to reject this.
So moved.
Have a second. Any further discussion by council? And I think we'll try to find some people that can work. Item B is final consideration of ordinance number 2021-10, request of rezoning parcel number 014015 from R3 Residential and C2 Commercial to planned unit development located at 137 West Church Street, Jasper, Georgia. And Lonnie and Sean, will let you bring this to us.
Mayor, Brandon, council, it's percrational, if I may. I might have missed something via Zoom. Did we vote on the objection and the motion to the previous item?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
All right. Robert Picho, I voted in objection to that, please.
So noted. Thank you.
Okay. This property is located behind the Eagles, between the Eagles and the post office. We've had public hearings, we've had advertisements for going on nine weeks, and Mr. Grant is here tonight, if you have any questions. Planning zoning route unanimously to request that this be favorable, and we did need it to, I mean, the workshop Thursday for a public hearing, so this will be another public hearing in council mode for the first reading.
And Ms. Coleman?
I have nothing further to add since there's nothing more to present, but if you have any questions for us or for the applicant, go ahead.
Thank you. And...
Lonnie, is this first reading or second reading?
This is our...
First reading.
First. Okay.
And Brandon, if you'd like to speak to this project and stand up, tell everybody who you are first off, and I want another correctional decision for your last name.
Yes, my name is Grant Schmelt.
Schmelt.
Yes.
Thank you so much for the clarification.
No problem, no problem. I don't have anything further to add unless anyone has any questions.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Mayor, and just for the public, if I could, this stems from, once again, I think it does deserve to just continually recap that the February 1 zoning approval, zoning ordinance approval did enact some slight modifications to procedurally how we do business. When someone requests for annexation or rezoning or something that has to do with land use or zoning, it goes through the process of an application, development checklist, it goes through an obligatory public hearing before the planning zoning commission, along with a public hearing before the mayor and council. Those two particular measures are specifically called out in the zoning ordinance to enable for the community and/or anyone interested to know that there is a potential land use change or something to do with land use or zoning. Then you have a public meeting such as this as a form of the regular council meeting, whereupon if there is kind of any loose ends that has been unanswered from a public hearing process, whereupon the public has a chance to speak on a particular issue, then this forum is for then the mayor and council to then have a discussion amongst any information that may be pending, or I think staff did a good job this past Tuesday and Thursday. They sent me out of town, so it would go a lot smoother. So I think, I do want to just make sure that tonight is just a public meeting whereupon, I think Thursday's meeting was very favorably considered for this, so much so that there was really nothing further to add. So this would be considered the first reading of ordinance to change the zoning of this
Council, any questions? At this time, I would intend a motion that we approve first reading of the request of a rezoning parcel number 014015 from R3 Residential and C2 Commercial to planned unit development located at 137 West Church Street, Jasper, Georgia.
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And that is our first reading complete, so...
And Mr...
Go ahead.
Yes, I was just going to add, Mr. Mayor, just because we are still in the lull of where our charter has been approved by the legislature, and it is waiting for the governor's signature, currently, as of this meeting, it has not been signed into law. So in effect, I believe I wanted to confirm, Mr. Mayor and for council, that Mr. Seifan, because of this tonight, at the conclusion of tonight, that we have to have a second obligatory reading at June, even if the governor signs between now and June 7th, correct?
I would agree with that because you would date it from the date of the application. So after the governor signs, new matters that come up, we'll only have to do the one and done to pass an ordinance, but since this came up prior to the governor signing, our new charter will still have to do a second reading.
So you understand, Grant, that your final approval because of this will not happen until our June, unless we have a work session that we do that in earlier than a...
And most likely, we will have a May work session.
And that would allow us to approve final on that at our May work session. So that's the purpose, that we can actually give you approval to go.
Hopefully, we can keep it going.
We're going to keep it going. Item B is consideration of a special event for July the 4th. We're going to ask Leslie Miller, if you are a lesbian, come bring this to us. And now there's going to be some Saturday and Sunday discussion, so for all of us on council, let's see if we can clarify exactly when we're going to do what.
Exactly. And if, once we find out, we'll for sure let you know, but I'm kidding. I am Leslie Miller, it's good to see all of you. I am the current, however outgoing, president of the Lions Club. And for only the second time since 1939, we had to abandon our plans for the 4th of July last year, as a lot of people did and as a lot of groups did. We are very excited this year to be able to add our event back this year. So as Mayor Lawrence said, we are considering more of a two-day event. Now, it's been a multi-day event in that the rides have been here for several days before, and they are planning to come in the Thursday before the 4th, which I believe is like the 30th, perhaps, of June, that Thursday before the 4th, and stay through the 4th, so they are planning to stay through Sunday. We are planning to have our parade and our afternoon entertainment, which includes bingo, things like that, on Saturday. Last year, when we did have to cancel our event, the fireworks company just put us on for the following year, 2021, and they put us down for July the 4th. I don't know if they didn't realize that was a Sunday or that we would want it to be on a different day, but they have set their schedule for the 2nd, the 3rd, the 4th, et cetera, and some on the 5th. So they have us down for the 4th. So what we thought we might do to draw some crowds back to the park, the rides will be open, and we are thinking of having the fireworks then on Sunday night, the 4th, rather than after the day's celebration on the 3rd. And we have a band that is going to be playing on Sunday night as well at the stage at Leving Park. So we would have some of our event on Saturday and then some on Sunday. and then some on Sunday afternoon, evening. We did consider having the parade later because the ride company usually doesn't send their workers in until, say, 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon, the day of the actual celebration, which in this case should be the 3rd. So to try to shorten that gap between the end of the parade and when the rides open, we're considering having the parade at, say, 1:00 rather than 10, and then the rides should be open. Yes, sir.
Let's back up one moment and specify that the parade is gonna be on...
Saturday.
Saturday at...
Hopefully, at 1:00.
At 1:00. Okay, so we wanna make sure we get that on everybody's schedule.
Right.
Parade is Saturday.
Saturday. Everything will start on Saturday with the parade. So we'd like to have it later, if that's suitable to you all, around 1:00. We're gonna save one and if there is there a discussion about that, we can do that. And then the rides would open around 2:30 or 3:00 that afternoon, at which time we would also have the musical entertainment at the stage, as well as the bingo. And we would run those things later in the day since there will not be a band that plays that night like we've had in the past. We have a band that usually comes in around 7:00 and plays until we have our raffle and then the fireworks. So we're putting off the band and the drawing for the raffle and fireworks to Sunday evening.
Parade on Saturday, fireworks on Sunday.
Yes.
If we do this enough times, maybe we all will.
We say it, it'll be true, won't it?
Thank you.
And so it, you know, pending any, any problems that you see arise, we do want to begin to advertise that because, of course, we did get a lot of flack last year about not having fireworks. And so, and I'm sure you guys did too, because having talked to some people at the office, calling, they said, you know, people are complaining. I said, hey, complain somewhere different besides here because there's nothing we can do about the fact that we were under several restrictions that we could not do anything else about. So the ride company has said that they are observing some cleanliness and sanitation needs, such as hand sanitizing stations and things like that. We do have a way to socially distance people at bingo, and of course, it's outside. So we pray for no rain. And I certainly wouldn't say no to any donations for the fireworks, so...
Okay, counsel, is there any questions at all?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just from a staff perspective, because it's been a little bit since we've done this. Leslie's been great to work with, other than her just blaming me last year. Anything else was...
Well, I did, but I liked her a few weeks.
Yeah, it was privately, so I didn't want to create the pandemic. But Leslie's been wonderful to work with. We began this process months ago. We had no idea what 2020 was going to hold. You may recall in your retreat of February of last year, we had talked about how we have certain signature events and then we have other events throughout the year. The signature events are, in essence, what we would consider kind of your, you're gonna have. It's just clockwork. The 4th of July, the partnerships that have been existing forever, the contribution that the city makes relative to police services, any sort of street closures such as for the parade. We did inform Leslie that we did auction off the stage last year in the surplus due to the fact that we said that it would be better and more advantageous to rent the stage for some of our signature events rather than to try to spend all day dealing with that other apparatus we had. So relative to any sort of cost on the Saturday, I think Sunday is pretty well self-contained. The Saturday, the cost involved would be renting the stage and putting from the courthouse, staff's time with any sort of barricades and public safety assistance. So once again, this is one of those signature events. And so as we continue to move forward in 2021 and future, you'll hear that more and more, terminology.
Thank you. Thank you, Leslie. Counsel, at this point, I would then take a motion that we approve this event and we may be authorized, our city manager, to spend up to whatever he feels is personally necessary within his limits to take care of it.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Foes, same. Yes and a second.
Thank you very much. And we will move forward with our plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Out of C is consideration of a special event for camping at Leaven Park for September the 2nd through the 5th, 2021. And Brandon, we'll ask you to bring this to us. And I think June Ash was gonna be...
Yes, June.
If you will come forward.
And once again, just to kind of bring it up again, we have not, I guess, finalized all the details with regards to coordinating with the sheriff and Jeep Fest. However, we do know that there is a scheduled Jeep Fest to occur this year. June and her organization, I believe in years past, it has kind of been integrated in with the organization in some capacity. But we wanted to break it out specifically for this year to make sure that we know the organization, the location, and the dates associated with the use of. So Jim, if you want to just kind of...
So I've looked at the last five years. We, as Prevent Child Abuse, has been able to manage the camping for Jeep Fest at Leaven Park. And so the campers start coming in on Thursday and then we just show them their spot. And the sheriff's department's pretty much, I believe, they've secured the park for us in the past. But since this year, they're not really doing that. They just said we would have to secure it. So, and so the campers will be there from Thursday to Sunday during Jeep Fest and just participate in the activities. And so what we do is we have a website set up for that where they can go on, pick their spot, pay for their spot. And then they also can use the facilities for showers if they're camping over at the training center. So we're asking if we can secure the park since the sheriff's department's not doing that this year for that event.
Okay, it's that, you do that. The date?
It's Labor Day weekend, so it's the 2nd...
2nd through the 5th.
Through the 5th.
Yes, yes.
So now you're talking about the funds that you charge for people to camp there.
Yes.
Where do those funds go?
They go to help our organization for child abuse.
So you're actually just doing that stuff for...
It's like a fundraiser, yes. So we worked hard and that whole weekend and, and for the money for it, yeah.
Okay. And counsel, any further questions on this for Ms. Ash?
So June, are you asking us to provide the security?
Uh, no.
Okay.
No, I'm just asking, I'm just having, asking permission for the park. I'm handling security.
Okay, counsel, at this point, I would then take a motion to approve the special event for camping at Leaven Park for September the 2nd to the 5th. For June Ash's organization.
No, George, we have partners.
We changed that.
We did, we changed it last year.
I never did that. Okay, so it's then a motion to approve. Second. Any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Foes, same. Motion carries.
So while I have your audience, I would also like to talk about long table.
We don't have that on our agenda.
So...
But why are you here?
So September 18th is our, we're planning to move forward with long table. I think I had talked to you guys earlier in the year about this. And so I just wanted, it's September the 18th, so I wanted to see if I could get that on the schedule for South Main again.
What time is it?
It'll be 6:00. But due to setup, we have to start at noon. So it would be from noon to 11:00.
Okay, we'll take a look at Cal and we'll get back to you on that.
Okay.
Was any issue whatsoever.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Out of D is discussion of the City of Jasper-Paceville. And I'm gonna ask council members Looney and Anne Snapey to bring this to us. As we have seen with other things, hiring personnel is difficult these days for all. And when you look at what you see with all of the people out there that are trying to find someone to go to work, then we can understand that we may be behind the curve on this. And this is not something that we haven't known since this administration took office. It's also just been one that we have now come to realize that we have some funds that might become available for there. So I'm gonna start by asking council members Jim Looney and Anne Snapey if they will bring this to our council.
Counsel, the administrative committee met one day last April, during April, to discuss this subject. And if you remember, at our retreat this last winter, we started discussions of PayScale. And we're determined that we needed to wait till mid-year to see what our finances were at that time and maybe be able to make a more sound decision, a better decision concerning the salaries. Committee is ready to make a recommendation with that, realizing that we also have the American Relief Act that has been passed by Congress. The Treasury Department was charged with writing regulations for that. They have until May 11th, I believe. I don't think that has changed to make those public. And at that time, we'll know for sure what we can do with the money. But what we would like to do is request staff to look at a couple of things for us. First, making a base rate of $13 an hour, like that would cost us, what funds are available for it. And also look at possibility of raising hourly positions by $1 at the same time. There may have to be a little bit of give and take on that to make the $13 minimum work. But staff will be able to give us a recommendation on that. At the same time, I would like to recommend that the city look at a bi-weekly payroll. Currently, we're paid weekly. Our employees are paid weekly. This, again, this new accounting system will allow this to be done with a little bit less fraying up time for employees to be doing some other activities. Understanding this could be a burden on employees going from a weekly to a bi-weekly payroll, I would also like to look at the possibility of moving toward a retention advancement bonus for employees to help transition this time. And maybe that would be a one-time payment to employees. And I think some work's already been done on this. I'm gonna say that, that we probably walked out of that meeting and staff started on it. I would hope that this is something that by mid-year we could have finalized and moving on to the next subject. So that is a recommendation from the committee. I don't know if it needs a second as a recommendation, but...
Well, we'll definitely open up a discussion at this point. And for those who are not committee members, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, Jill, when you took over as interim city manager, did we have discussions about job descriptions, pay scales, employee satisfaction, those types of things?
Certainly, and a lot of effort was put on that actually after I moved into a transition period with Brandon.
So there seems to be a lot of misinformation that's been propagated and a lack of information that's been given to the public. Did we hire a consultant at the cost of hundreds of thousands of dollars to go through and determine our pay scales and our job descriptions and so forth and so on?
No, I did that myself as a, in the transition period.
Right. So this best practice that we've tried to establish was done internally by you and the staff, given to you as a challenge when you were interim city manager, on the list when Brandon came here? And it's something we've been working on for now several years?
Long time.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your hard work.
Further discussion by council members? Mr. Redfield? Further discussion by counsel? He looks like he's frozen.
Yeah.
Kirk, can you hear us? If he's froze. He's frozen.
He's moving.
Kirk's not. We'll move on. And I don't think that this is gonna require, although, let me put it this way.
The staff's gonna have to brush that up.
Staff will have to bring this back to us. So we're gonna ask if this can be considered as a recommendation to staff? And that's what the, that's what counsel...
If I didn't say that's what, that's what I meant to say.
All right, so...
Request them to study and report back to counsel.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
And, and Mr. Mayor, just to, just to kind of tie everything up to the comments the committee made along with Dr. Proctor, since February of 19, this has been a priority established by y'all to me. The TAVT reduction in 2019 reduced and inhibited our efforts to be able to implement because we did recognize it was gonna be a few hundred thousand dollars. The pandemic of 2020, as we're going through our budget, further exacerbated the issue that we knew existed. But yet, we had even meant to say that as the first quarter ended in 2021, we would move forward with this initiative. I would like to applaud each of you for continuing to maintain this is a priority for us to look at. We do recognize that this will be several, if not more hundreds of thousands of dollars. However, it is something that has been needed to be done for quite some time. I do think that from a city manager's perspective, I'm tasked with making sure that we're staff, our levels are appropriate. I do think that this would be more of a retention more than a recruitment, albeit I would love for it to be a recruitment tool. Any monies that we try to enhance the salary pay scale or any sort of advancements or other incentives to recruit folks. But ultimately, what I want us to do is maintain our existing staff levels and hopefully, we'll be able to encourage others to join the team. So thank you all. We are about one year, believe it or not, one year, removed from implementing the pay scale, organizational charge, department leaders, salary thing. So once again, this continues to move the needle forward with what we had anticipated, I think, in the most fiscally responsible, prudent fashion. So thank you all for that. It would be our hope that Beverly and I can have you all some information June 7th meeting for consideration, possibly implementation, that would then lead into the audit presentation in June, as well as July of this year, a mid-year budget amendment. So once again, everything we try to do is very organized, strategic... So once again, everything we try to do is very organized, strategic, and just kind of moving forward. So thank you all.
And again, at that same time, we'll be getting more information about the American Relief Act.
All right, may I add one more thing?
I'm sorry?
May I add one? Employee satisfaction is tremendously important to this mayor and council. At P-MOT, it was a priority for me. I was very somewhat surprised earlier this week. I still chair the Education, Workforce Development Committee for the Chamber of Commerce and the Adult Education Director there sits alongside committee, Amy Denny. And she was tremendously excited when the city had reached out to her to discuss the possibility of GED for our employees working the thing. And so I just wanted to bring that to attention, that I'm aware of that staff and I think it's an awesome idea. And well done.
Thank you.
And there has been a lot of work internally on pay scales and job descriptions, trying to get all this up. And so we appreciate y'all helping us do that.
And then also keeping the employees' benefits where they're at. I think that's a big plus too. Staff really does an excellent job.
Correct.
Okay, so we wait to hear back from staff on these recommendations. Moving forward, item E is a consideration approval of printing contract with Arista, and we'll ask Beverly and Lindsay if they will bring that to us.
We met, Lindsay and I met, was it last week or week before? Last week. Arista, Lindsay had reached out to some printing vendors because going to the new software, we're going to have to get a vendor because TBS printed our utility bills and property tax bills. But since we're not using TBS, we got a quote from Arista, and Arista is used by many governments in Georgia that have our software. So that's something, you know, he could talk with them directly. But he came out and he sat down and he gave us some examples. He gave us a quote that will save us anywhere $800,000 to $1,000,000 a month in printing. And we can have pretty colors on our bills now. They're not just going to be black and white. What else, Lindsay?
The responsiveness of these picklers is really good. I've worked with them, you know, before in other cities. They have an incredible response time to any kind of problem. And I think Rachel will be pleased. I think that's it. Anytime we can save money.
Save things. That's strange.
And be more efficient, too.
Okay, so there's not a specific dollar point on this?
Well, the biggest cost is postage a month. I think it was $720, I think was their monthly charge. But the rest of it was, if we wanted to add anything, it would be like 11 cents a sheet. But our software has a place where we can, if we need to make any kind of announcements, we can do it on the bill. So that's not extra. The biggest cost is postage, but we can't... They have a sorting mechanism where we can get the best rate because they sort it by courier route or whatever. They have ways of making it cheap.
Beverly? Two, this says we're switching softwares. And with this company, we're also going to have the ability to be able to email customers their bills versus having to send it in the mail. So that's a new feature that, you know, everybody's calling, hey, can you email me that bill? We aren't able to do that, but we will have that later this fall have that ability.
And a lot of people that just pay them on and just send them by email.
Yeah. And we have the ability for people to pay ACH. We won't go live on utilities until August. But all of this stuff is necessarily to get it.
And I see that they have waived their initial setup fee.
Yes.
And the service fee is better than what we currently pay.
Yes.
So anything else from staff?
I think that covers it.
At this point, I would entertain a motion from council that we approve the printing contract with Arista.
Sure.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye. So same, and Arista has that contract. Item F is consideration approval order number 2021 dash 011 to amend the malt beverage portion of the City of Jasper alcohol excise tax. Brandon and Lindsay, if you would, bring this to us to start.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Lindsay, do you want to go first?
Do you mind coming over here?
Mayor and Council, so it was brought to our attention that there was an inconsistency with between the OCGA state ordinance and what the city ordinance was for the malt beverage. So we reached out to Attorney Siphon and asked if he could help us out. And so we have a new ordinance that we're asking for permission to put into place so that we can be in compliance with the state.
Mr. Mayor and Council, you may know those city attorneys, they tend to want to do things correctly. So we have an obligation as staff to accept their recommendations. When we have been doing something that although is in compliance with our own ordinance, we continue down that path. However, when you get a new finance team together and they start just causing all sorts of problems, you just, at that moment, you turn it over to the city attorney and say, look, there appear to be inconsistencies in the malt beverage. I call it beer, I guess beer, wine, liquor, distilled spirits. So with respect to the other two, in effect, there's really no changes. It is the collection of the excise tax of the malt beverage that this particular ordinance is trying to bring our city ordinance into compliance with OCGA. So that's really the extent of my knowledge.
Thank you.
OCGA being the state regulation.
Correct.
So as a continuation of our best practices as a city, council, I would entertain a motion that we approve the passing of this ordinance number 2021 dash 011 to amend our malt beverage portion of the City of Jasper alcohol excise ordinance to agree with state standards.
Solid.
Anne Snaby, please. Motion in a second, and any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And it is done. Item G is interesting. Discussion of weather-related events and the impact on the City of Jasper. Brent?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and Council.
This is where you really get shot.
Absolutely. It's been a while. So believe it or not, council, the mayor and city clerk tried to take this item off the agenda because they said, we could get this meeting done in an hour if you would just hush.
That's a challenge for you.
Now that we're right at seven o'clock, that's not going to happen. So we've got plenty of time. In all sincerity, I did think that you all would want to get a brief update, and I mean very brief, as well as the citizens. You may recall last month, we kind of highlighted the fact that the March, end of March storms going into the April 5th meeting was pretty well still new. We're trying to sort some things out. I've broken it up into two categories, Jeanette Drive, the Bridge, Culver, the roadway, and the water line. And then you got the Palm Swamp, the Cove Creek, raw water line. The bypass that is in is not intended to be a permanent fix. We still have the main raw water line that needs to be repaired and the finished water line going out, so there's two. So with respect to Jeanette Drive, the bridge road water line, within the next 60 to 90 days, EXP, our engineering firm, that's a pre-qualified engineering firm through GDOT. You may recall, GDOT had provided us with some monies to offset the cost of about a quarter million dollars. They should have engineering complete within the 60 to 90 days that would enable us to put this out to bid. We would be bidding this out kind of in totality to say, hey, just turnkey, what's it going to cost? The Cove Creek, the engineers, Turnacy, have finalized the design. It is out for bid, I believe scheduled to be opened in their office next Friday, May 14th. So that one is probably the unknown with respect to what we're looking at in terms of cost. Because of the price of materials, labor, et cetera, I do not even know, you know, how many bids we may get. But nonetheless, we hope to be able to present y'all at the June 7th meeting what that bid amount is and then to move forward on that. It will be, you know, a pretty major project, but well worth it in the long run. So that's it. So all the updates.
Thank you, sir. A little while to Jean, to give the rest of that story, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, committee reports. Development Committee and Councilmembers Dr. Sunny Proctor and Kirk Radfield.
Kirk, back.
Kirk, can you hear us?
I can hear you. I apologize. I lost the meeting earlier. I reconnected.
Okay, so Sunny, you and Kirk.
Development Committee, I will defer to Dr. Proctor. There was a meeting for the committee. Unfortunately, at the last moment, I was not able to attend. Dr. Proctor?
Thank you, sir. Welcome back. We've had several meetings recently with possible projects going on, and so that's exciting. And then, of course, this multi-use project that we are working on that we did our first reading on tonight is also tremendously advantageous, I think, to our economic development project. A developer has experience in Canton and has done a really good job at the development down there. I was excited to see that we had a five-man planning and zoning committee that met this past week, which I believe is the first time we've had a four-to-five person before. It may have happened earlier, of course, not so often. All that long ago, we didn't even have an ordinance that established that committee, and now we have been through such great progress. Other than that, just keep moving along. Lonnie and Shawna did a great job on our Thursday night presenting on their own without the oversight of... Thank you, sir. Pleasure to work with both of you.
Thank you, sir. Street and Parks Committee would be Councilmembers Anne Snaby and John Fast.
Well, me and Anne were supposed to get together last weekend, go up to L.J. and look at some bike trails that's being put together by the karting bike company. But unfortunately, weather kind of got in the way and I ended up having to go to Jones Park to work, so we wasn't able to get up there and look at it. That way, we have some better ideas once we get the final design and where we can what we can do on that part.
Okay, Anne?
Yeah, we're just continuing to look at things we can do over there and then forward it.
Administration Committee, Councilmembers Jim Looney and Anne Snaby.
I think our earlier discussion of the pay scale took up our committee report.
Agreed. Water Wastewater Committee, Councilmembers John Fast and Dr. Sunny Proctor.
We continue to work with our neighbors to secure the future of our water resources in the county on our 136 project. We've had, as you all know, really now for about two and a half years, we've been working on doubling our wastewater treatment facility, and that is moving along quite nicely. We had a meeting not so long ago with Mr. Turnacy to discuss that. And most recently, we had a meeting with the USDA representatives, including Mr. Siphon and myself, to talk about the next steps to keep that project moving along. Again, as a reminder, grant and loan monies at a very low rate favorable to doubling our capacity. And hopefully, we can get that project underway in the next, I don't know, maybe 18 months or two years, but it just takes a long time. Right now, we're still working with APD to approve the plans, which will be the next step, and then we can start finalizing some of those details.
So I want to ask a couple of questions here. One is that grant, I believe is a $3 million grant, and the loan is like a $4 million loan on that particular project?
Yes, sir.
And that contract has been signed?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate that, sir.
Have the carts taken?
The block is taken. You can do it.
Ms. Yel, we've already been there earlier, you know, we approved three more generators. How many pump stations, including the mains on Cove, do we got generators now there?
Raw water and the wells, they're all generated now. Awesome.
That is what keep our reliability up and should be able to keep the water flowing. How long did we start this, about three or four years ago with generators?
Yes, started with, say, five year building, zero.
So if we have fire outage or a storm, it's out. We're just in trouble, so.
The people in the Hickory Cove community will be very grateful for these, so where they maintain water, because as soon as the fire goes out, their own water, this will allow them to stay hot. It may not be additional services, but it's certainly an enhancement of services.
Okay, Police and Fire Committee, Councilmembers Kirk Radfield and Jim Looney. Can you hear me, Kirk?
I can. We did have a meeting with the chiefs of public safety. I don't have a major update on my end. I've been to defer to Jim.
Yeah, we are continuing with discussions on a number of items with our chiefs. Their reports are included. I don't think they're included in our package yet. But they will have, oh, it's separate. Gotcha. Each of the chiefs will have reports in a minute. Chief Roper, you may want to talk a little bit, if you can, about where we are in getting folks moved back into Burton Street.
You'll be doing that in our report?
Yes, please. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Financial Board, Beverly, you take this one.
This is our second month in the new format, and the first month with the software. Last week was our first week of printing checks, council payable checks, with the electronic signatures. We've been very busy with making sure everything's correct, all the historical data that's going in. Just, it's a lot of checking numbers when you transition to new software. But the numbers are still within reason at this point in the year where we should be at 33%. And you see, we're at 36% for revenue, so that's a good thing. There were a couple of, you know, departments over budget, but by and large, everything is on target. Lindsay, anything else? We did, was a busy month with fleet, but those were purchases made out of other funds, not general fund. And we didn't include everything on the general fund, so you'll know, you know, we're supposed to have a balanced budget. So the revenues look bigger than the expenses thus because we did not fit the service or the other non-major funds on here, or, sorry, departments. We just wanted to put the need on there. But anytime y'all want to see more detail, we can deliver it with a smut of paint now.
It's awesome.
Thank you, Beverly. Development Report, line waters.
Mayor and Council, for the month of April, we issued 17 building permits, which totaled nearly $14,000. On-site inspections, we did 118, did 28 soil erosion inspections, seven stormwater inspections... eighteen, did twenty-eight soil erosion inspections, seven stormwater inspections, five plan reviews, seven pre-planning meetings, issued seven new business licenses. And also I'd like to mention, as of tomorrow, we will be uncovering these stop signs over at Collins and Noah Street. I talked to the paint company. They are, they've been trying to get up here and put the stop bars on the road. They tried to get up here before we uncovered them, but due to weather and other things, they've been up behind. They said they would definitely try to be here before Monday, and they could be here as early as Thursday. So, if the public would just be watching for those stop signs, because they will be uncovered tomorrow.
Thank you, Lonnie. Police report. Chief Love?
Oh, it's a microphone. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The city of Jasper Police Department for the month of April responded to nine hundred forty-six calls from the nine-one-one center. We worked sixty-seven motor vehicle accidents. Total of a hundred and ninety-six citations, district belt police department for the following, six D U I's, a hundred and twenty-one for speeding, five seatbelt, one reckless driving, fifty-two miscellaneous violations, two suspended over road, three possession of marijuana, and six unlawfully usable wireless devices detected and driven. Georgia State Patrol, this is a total of a hundred and forty-two. We're granted to the city court three hundred and thirty-eight. Total fifteen state warrants were taken for the following, one for stalking Mr. Mayor, one obstruction Mr. Mayor, two battery family violence Mr. Mayor, two felony shoplifting, one shoplifting Mr. Mayor, one criminal damage to property in the second degree, felony, two possession of controlled substance felony, criminal trespass under the Family Violence Act, Mr. Mayor, acquiring a license plate, concealed identity, identity of a motor vehicle, Mr. Mayor, one suspended registration, one reckless conduct, one discharging firearm on or near a public highway, Mr. Mayor. Miscellaneous caused fifty-three alarm calls, nine disorderly, one harassment, nine trespassing, thirty-three suspicious activities, and fifteen domestic, this is, and that's headed, no burglaries.
Pretty good. Thank you, chief.
And I think we had our first court in May, and plead say that one very well. The mayor come over and some observation along with the city manager, and it was working out greatly. The judge loved us, our solicitor, and along with the public defendant, there is no problems at all. Very much so.
So, how's the police department looking?
I think it's good. It's been running here. We ain't got far to go. Just living it up.
Living well.
Plan comes together.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
And fiery boy, Chief Steve Brook?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the month of April, student fire department responded to a hundred and seventeen calls. Then worked for one commercial structure fire, three vehicle fire, two grass fires, fourteen car accident injuries, seventy-eight emergency medical responses, and nineteen other calls. As long as I recovered mostly inspection stuff, and did a few fire inspection plans, block station, but I've had him on shift quite a bit. Here's some staff issues. Update on the mold. The mold situation has been remediated. We had an independent test done to confirm that we're clean. Guys and equipment were all moved back to the fire station last Saturday. Not such a patchy again, Saturday before. We're all good and done.
Brook? Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Luke.
And my favor is good, though.
Wait a minute, before we adjourn, can I make one comment?
Okay.
I know that this coming Thursday is going to be busy. There's a lot of thing on, a lot of things on council's agenda, but I did want to mention that Stella Brewer's retirement party will be Thursday from one to three o'clock here at City Hall. Stella has been with the city of Jasper for...
Thirty-three years.
Thirty-three, thirty-three years. And want to recognize first her service, but invite anyone that can come to the retirement party to be there. I, I certainly plan on it.
That's Thursday from one to three at City Hall?
Yes. Friday's her last day.
All right. Thank you so much, sir. Does anyone here have anything else to bring before the city council before we adjourn? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.